Wait a minute. No.
Okay.
All right, I will review that.
Okay, thank you.
I thought that's what the preview was about, but.
Sorry.
Anyway.
We make a noise.
All in the joint school board meeting and board of supervisors meeting?
Yeah, calling the board member of the joint school board.
Yep.
This is there.
Six thirty.
Yes.
It's twenty-nine. So just to review, the format that we use at the school board, which has worked really well for us, is just to, when we have a discussion point, we give everybody time to discuss it and then we, or just everybody to say what they feel about it, and then we take questions until there are no questions left to be asked. Today, what we want to do is give Ms. Shannon Ervin a chance to do this presentation to everybody, and then the board, the school board will take their comment sections to reiterate some of the points that we want to make sure that you get, or that you hear from us specifically. Got it, okay?
Thank you.
Got it?
Margaret.
Well, we want to.
Do we need to approve the agenda?
The what?
Maybe we need to approve the agenda?
Not really.
Yeah.
It's pretty generic. I mean, it's, we just do a presentation.
Do you feel like we need to do that?
We always do, but it's completely empty.
All right, does anybody have any changes or edits to our agenda?
For the school side?
No.
No. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion. Street.
Second.
All right, without objection. Any objections? None. Motion passes.
Awesome.
So, want to thank everyone for taking this time to have this joint meeting. Obviously, it's something we've been helping to do. COVID created some barriers over the last couple of years and looking to try to bring back a good thing and good discussion. Obviously, we're aware, the school board's had some tough times in the last two years with circumstances that nobody's ever experienced before, so we are optimistic in having a good, healthy discussion, learning about the needs of the school system, and of course, any questions we may have or you may have for us, as Ms. Claire has mentioned during the presentation, then everyone will have an opportunity to speak, and when we get to that time period, just, we're gonna, everyone could be mindful of other people's time, so. Thank you so much, and at this time, it's on you guys at school, so.
Thank you, sir. Shannon, Dr. Cox?
This will be the ready PowerPoint, and I'm standing in the middle of the room because I have a real soft voice. When we built the budget, there's some fundamental idea that we know that we have to address before we do anything else, and first is safety. We've had a scary incident just this past week of a young man that came into the school as a visitor without going through the proper protocols, and so, you know, we're looking at what we can do to make our schools as safe as they possibly can. We've been fortunate, the last two years, that we've gotten $250,000 each year in school security and safety grants, and we've been able to update our camera systems and our secure entries. But we still have work to do, and we'll continue to seek those opportunities as we can. K-12 literacy and addressing the learning loss. I'm glad that Mr. Rutherford acknowledged early on that we've gone through a pandemic, the first time in our lifetime in over a hundred years. So our predecessors didn't have to go through that and didn't know to train us on what to do to go through the pandemic and then to now recover from that, so we are experiencing traumatic learning loss, and we know that we've got work to do to be able to bring those kids back where they should be at grade level. Innovation. We know that the world is changing, and it's changing at warp speed, and that there are things on the cutting edge that we need to prepare our children for in the future. So when we're looking at CTE programs, especially in things like cybersecurity or solar power, those kinds of things, we've got to be moving forwards, and even though the world is hard right now, we can't just keep doing what we've always been doing because that's what we've always done. Best practices for excellence in teaching and learning. We're excited about the new direction that we'll be going in. We're finally getting our team put together, and we think we are making good strides in being able to motivate, to inspire, and to develop and mentor the staff moving forward. Social and emotional learning before. I don't think that we're different than other divisions in that the behaviors that we've seen with our students has really deteriorated from when they left us over a year ago due to the pandemic. I think having that almost a year off without structure and without a schedule was detrimental to them, and then coming back into an environment, COVID and the pandemic is a scary thing for a lot of people, not only for the kids that are in our buildings, but for their families at home, especially if they're dealing with grandmas and grandpas and people that are more susceptible to the virus. We've got a lot going on in terms of social and emotional needs. Career exploration and readiness. We lost our technology teacher just a short while ago to industry, which has set us back in terms of being able to jumpstart our cybersecurity program. We have a new technology teacher at the high school that we've not been able to put necessarily in technology courses because we had to staff economics and personal finance, and so we're hoping to move him out of that role next year and to help us again move forward with the cybersecurity program. We've had a position available at the middle school since August that has not been able to fill for technology, so that is an area of high demand and low supply. In terms of other occupations and other career explorations, we have a CNA program that kids can start in a nursing home or healthcare facility right away. We've got auto mechanics where kids can go out and get jobs, building trades where they can enter the construction site, a wonderful ag program. So all of those areas, you know, kids can get jobs, so we want to make sure that what we're offering them are the programs that they need when they leave us. Just some facts and figures, just so that we're aware and we can reinforce that teachers are grossly underpaid, especially in Virginia, that the average pay of Virginia public school teacher in nineteen twenty was $57,665.
When you started.
What did I say?
No, I said, in nineteen twenty, when you started.
So that is $6,468 below the national average of $64,133. Sources from the EIA website, you can check that out. So when we looked at the budget goals and the board goals, we wanted to make sure that we were directing dollars to where the school board had seen the future of the school division. So first and foremost, I guess, probably had those in reverse order, is the safety and health of our students. So we've done things on the security end, and we've been dealing with mitigations, strategies for COVID, so we've done things like buy masks for all of our students and our staff. We have air purifiers in every room that requested one. We have tape down the floor to socially distance students. So we've done a lot of things to make our, to raise the awareness of things that we can do to mitigate the spread of the COVID virus. Student success, we also wanted to make sure that our dollars were being put in to a place that we could look at each kid where they are because they're coming in at all different places. Some kids had moms and dads at home that could help them with their assignments and could even move them through at an advanced rate. Some were on autopilot, and some didn't have internet at all, so they could only get paper and pen work when it was available. Trying to figure out where each kid is and to move them to where they need to go. Diversify courses, we want to be able to offer as many courses as we can to get kids to where they want to go. So not everyone wants to go and be an accountant, I don't know why, but they don't, and so some of them want to be a neurosurgeon, some of them want to be a lawyer, some of them want to be an auto mechanic, and so we need to be able to fit the courses for what their careers are. Career readiness, I don't know about you, but when I was going through school, we really didn't get into that. It was, you're college bound, so you need to take these courses. It wasn't what you wanted to be when you grow up, and so we're really moving away from that one-size-fits-all approach to an individualized approach. In terms of operational excellence, we didn't want to put forth a budget of need. We have reviewed lots of statistics, lots of comparison data, and we think that we have put together a budget that is of merit. Efficient use of resources. Our budget is about eighty percent salary and wages, so we are a labor-intensive organization, and so it's hard to do anything with our budget that doesn't affect people or programs. We want a highly qualified workforce, we want competitive compensation. There are not enough licensed teachers within the boundaries of Nelson County to be able to outfit our schools, so we have to hire folks from outside of the region and bring them in so that we have coverage in our classrooms, and so when they have to drive in and incur that additional expense, we think we have to pay a bit more to be able to get them to come on board. Not only is it the salary, but it's also that they are many times on a different schedule than their students', and so if they have a house in Avramall, our school calendars might not match up, and so we have to do something to encourage them to come. And so, had we not front-ended our pay scale several years ago, we probably would have many, many more vacancies than we have now, and so I applaud both boards for really looking at that, because we, I know when I, my first years of employment, we had not many new teachers, but a lot of teachers towards the high end of their seniority, and as they have retired, as baby members are getting older, and as we're retiring, we have to replace them. And so being able to be competitive, and maybe even a little more competitive than South of us, we've been able to keep the majority of our divisions filled. I know a lot of divisions are really struggling with empty classrooms, and we have a few, but it could be much worse. Community engagement. Our teachers had to flip on a dime in terms of changing their methods of how they taught, so I guess I applaud them, that there are a lot of veterans that had to learn new technologies and had to embrace that to be able to reach kids through the internet, through other technologies, when we were operating on a hybrid model. So we've done a lot more with technology of getting the word out to folks in terms of using the Canvas platform for lessons. We do a lot more informing the public, I don't know if you've noticed, our Facebook postings are becoming more and more pronounced as we're trying to let the community know the good things that are going on in the division. When we built the budget, again, we started in December, and the only budget that we had at that time was the governor's budget, and we still don't know, I think they're reconvening next week, so hopefully the governor's budget would be the worst-case scenario for the division and the House or Senate, whichever comes through, or whatever that combination looks like, we'll do a little better. The projected school-funded enrollment, we have projected at fourteen fifty-four. The birth rate from five years ago actually is up a little bit, and so we think the number, fourteen fifty-four is a good one. Workers' comp, property and automobile insurance premiums, we haven't gotten those renewals yet, we think that they will be fairly constant, and we didn't build in a contingency for major equipment failures, so, ouch, I've got my fingers crossed that everything will continue working another year. The challenges that we face, that I'm sure you're facing too, the Consumer Price Index for the twelve months that ended in February was up seven point nine percent. That's the highest in forty years. We're having difficulty finding workers, classified workers and professional staff. You see our bus on the side of twenty-nine with the help wanted sign out there. I think that there are probably five or six drivers down, and many times they're mechanics, our director, the assistant director, and the secretary are all out driving, which is not ideal. Again, we've had the technology position that we've had advertised since August. We had a guidance counselor at Rockfish that we averaged for six months. We've actually hired non-licensed people to finish teaching positions because the state waived the ninety-day limit on substitute teaching for this year only, so we won't be able to do that next year unless they have that waiver in place again. Learning loss caused by the pandemic, we are seeing growth now, but we are still probably at least six months or so behind where they should be, but it started out even worse than that. Energy costs have skyrocketed. We had a long-term, or a year locked-in propane agreement with Foster Fuels, we were locked in at ninety-nine cents the previous year, that expired, they weren't able to renew it. I think we're paying now like one ninety-nine, so we're looking at a two-hundred percent increase in the cost of propane. Some of the things that were included in the governor's budget which actually helped us is that they had no loss funding to offset the effects of the pandemic on retention market, and so overall across the Commonwealth, the number of students in public ed has decreased, but they didn't hold that against school divisions and included no loss funding that's in the budget. They also are looking at doing away with a portion of the grocery tax, and they're going to hold harmless hour portion of that in terms of giving us the same amount of money. They've included a five percent cost of living for SOQ instructional and support positions, and so we inserted that from the very beginning of our budget.
SOQ is.
Same as quality, that's the minimum level that schools. Funding for English language learning teachers, they changed the ratio, we have one English language, it's, we used to say it was teachers' farm money, so it would be nine of your students who are learning either. The ratio is being changed at twenty-two for a thousand, and instead of having the one that we have, we're literally one point two-five based on our case load. They're also changing the early reading initiative. We have town tutors in our schools for K-three, we're going to expand that to fourth and fifth grade for the governor's budget, and then for the first time, they included a pretty sizable chunk of money to modernize school facilities, about one point three million dollars, and so that is also included in our facility budget, which could help with our CIP program. Just on a statewide level, if you look at the enrollment in two thousand nine, ten, and compare it to the enrollment in two thousand two, two thousand three, there was only a one point three seven percent increase in students over that period, and basic aid to all school divisions went up five point nine eight percent. But if you look at the general fund, overall for the state general fund, over that same period of time, the general fund has gone up one hundred and ten point oh five percent, but school basic aid again, five point nine eight percent, so the state budget is growing, but public ed is not getting much of the growth. As you know, the state funding formula that we all take, that determines how much money the state gives out of their coffers to support public education, has gone up, so Nelson's last buy-in was point five six oh four, and this coming buy-in is point five eight eight eight. So if you equate that to dollars, we're about three hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and some odd dollars less than what we would have gotten had our composite index not changed. So if you look at our overall budget request of thirty-two million, seven ninety-two, five ninety, it's funded with fifteen thousand, six thirty-six, six eighty-seven was to its last year's county appropriation, ten million, six nineteen, one fifty-eight from the state, two million, five twenty-three, nine seventy-one from the federal government, five hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred, and other revenue, which is charges for services, basically. It leaves us with a deficit of three million, four thirty-one, three seventy-four.
Can you go back?
Did you say thirty-one or thirty-two?
Three million, four thirty-one, three seventy-four is the deficit, is the reason. And again, this is a sad statistic, well, this is also from the Indian Education Association's website, that Virginia is a top-ten state in household income, ranks forty-first in the U.S. in state per pupil funding. We went back to that other slide where state, over the previous years, where basic aid has only gone up five point nine eight percent, the rest of the budget, one hundred and ten, will say that Virginia is not funding education to the level it should. Up with the years, I guess probably five or six years ago, there was a major talk among the legislators that requiring school divisions should spend sixty percent in the instruction category. We did this slide just to show that we do meet what the General Assembly would suggest as the optimal balance for school funding. Our budget is sixty-one point four three percent instruction, four point six seven percent for administration, nine point eight six percent for transportation, ten point oh nine percent for building and grounds, four point four for food services, and the facilities chunk is higher this year than in past years because of that influx of the state monies we just talked about, they had that one point three million dollars in the state budget this year, which is included. Our debt service is the payment for our energy program that we did a few years ago. We've got probably about six or seven years to that. Technology budget at four point three five percent, and then our transfer to the textbook account, a point five nine percent. So the total overall budget request is thirty-two million, again, seven ninety-two, five ninety. So if you look by object code, this is how we have to report to the state, you'll see that salary and wages is fifty, almost eighty-five percent of our budget, and fringe benefits are twenty-four percent, so seventy, eighty-nine percent, seventy-nine percent of our budget is salary and wages and fringe benefits, so almost eighty percent. Purchase services, vendors that come in and do work for us, whether it's painting or a coffee or a painting, or shoveling snow in the winter, those kinds of things. Utilities, property and automobile insurance, travel is mileage for people to drive their personal vehicles or to attend conferences. Materials and supplies, we include paper and pencils kinds of things, but also your food supplies in our cafeteria program. Payments to joint operations would be the payments that we paid at prep for our special ed program, and the debt service capital outlay and leases is at six point oh three percent. If you look at their budget in terms of what is fixed and what is discretionary, if you look at the things that we have to do, it's about eighty-seven point four six percent fixed and only twelve point five four percent discretionary, and we are a service industry and labor-intensive. Again, this shows the composite index for the twelve months that ended in February of twenty-two, and again, it's at seven point nine percent, which is the highest in forty years. We'll point out that the energy index is at twenty-five point six percent. And I hit us pretty hard in the coming year, unless it goes down, things in the Ukraine get better. This is a per pupil summary. If you took our budget just in raw numbers and divided it by the number of students, it's overall twenty-two thousand, five forty-three, but if you only consider the regular expenses, that's just taking our regular budget and taking out the special ed costs and dividing it out, it would be nineteen thousand, seven sixty-one. Then if you only included your special needs students, it would be thirty-three thousand, seven sixty-one, but special needs students are much more expensive to educate than regular ed students are. The major differences from twenty-one, twenty-two. We started off looking at our budget to include the five percent cost of living adjustment that the governor proposed in his budget. We put that in, and then our salary scale, because there have been a number of years that we've not been able to do step increases, we have veteran teachers making the very same thing as entry-level teachers, and so we wanted to put in just a small amount between each step so that the salaries could be differentiated, and so we put in a half a percent between each step, and so we started with that and looked at that, and then realized that we still had folks that were working for us that would be under the poverty level, and so we went back and said, okay, let's adjust the support staff scale to fifteen dollars an hour, and start there, and so a bus driver or a cafeteria worker that would come to us would make a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour, and we built the budget with that, and things were going, and then the news came out about the February cost of living increased going up even more to the seven point nine, and we realized that even at fifteen dollars an hour, it wasn't enough for a living wage for our entry-level folks, and so we went back and adjusted the salary scales so that any support staff that was making less than twenty dollars an hour would be making twenty dollars an hour. So right now, the budget includes twenty dollars an hour minimum for support staff with a half a percent between each step. The administrative and the teacher scale went up five percent, a half a percent between each step, and then the last thing that we wanted to do on the teacher scale was that when we are looking at salary scales across our region and our target group that we compete with, we did really well at the beginning of the scale, but when we hit to step twenty, we fall way behind, and so we wanted to adjust steps twenty through the end of the scale so that we were where we think step twenty-five will be next year, and so we have made those adjustments. Health insurance, our health insurance is calling for a ten point five percent increase, and if you look at what we paid this year versus what they're projecting And if you look at what we paid this year versus what they're projecting for next year, that would be $434,813. That's a little different than what is on your summary sheet because we've had a number of positions that are unfilled. And so I went by the current participation rate of 291,000, I think is what's in there. So we have a number of unfilled positions that we hope to fill in the coming year with grant funds. We had one claim, just so that you have a point of reference. One claim last year for the division was almost $800,000, so it's 799,000 and some change. So health insurance is just so very important to our employees that we don't want to have to change the programs that we offer. We offer the Key Care 250 and the Key Care 1000, and then we have a high deductible plan. So we would like to continue that. Construction, again, the state construction grant of 1.3 million dollars, that's in there. That could be applied to a school CIP program if it gets through the General Assembly. We're not looking to add any regular operational positions for the coming year. We're looking at reclassifying one. But we also are looking at some temporary funding to address learning laws and some socio-emotional concerns that we have. But they would be paid for fully with cares and extra funding, and they're advertised as temporary positions so those folks know that they're only a temporary assignment. Just to give you an idea of how we've adjusted staffing from the past year budgets in 2019, '20, we've got 10 and a half positions. In 2021, we cut two additional positions. And then 2022, two additional positions. And then we have many positions that have just been unfilled. You know, we have custodial positions that we have had advertised that we can't find folks for. We've got instructional assistant positions that we've advertised and haven't found an applicant for because we tied it into the COVID and heating up and emergency tax background. For us, it takes the billets. When we have any spoke on that wheel that's not working properly, it's a bumpy ride to get from the beginning of the day to the end of the day. If we don't have enough bus drivers, things have to shift, and we might have to make two routes. Or we will have a mechanic that can't work on a bus or can't inspect a vehicle out there driving a school bus. If we don't have, you know, enough workers in the lunch line, our food service director is out there lending a hand. It takes everyone working together to make our school system. So for reference, this kind of hit home with me. I was still wanting to get my car worked on. And I was pulling up to the toy oven dealership, and this is the clean machine, touchless car wash, now hiring, starting at $15 an hour. And when we were looking at making our bus drivers pay at $15 an hour, it struck me, a bus driver is doing, you know, life or limb kind of work where the person at the clean machine is washing my car, you know. Where does that make sense? And so when you look at it that way, you think the $20 an hour is warranted. For reference, a full-time cafeteria worker working six hours a day currently earns 13,802 per year. Here is the U.S. poverty guidelines for the 48 contiguous states. A person and a family of one, so just take that one cafeteria worker and compare that to the one person on the chart. They make 13,802, the poverty guideline's 13,590. So they're making $212 more per year than the federal poverty guideline does. And again, the bus driver who's transporting the kids on roads that are kind of scary even for a single car are making $514 more than the poverty. Teacher shortages, we're not alone. We have a few positions that we've not been able to fill. But across the Commonwealth, there are thousands teaching positions that are left unfilled. Colleges aren't putting out enough graduates to meet the needs. Daily roomers are retiring, the effects of the pandemic. I think folks are tired. And so I think they're leaving the field in a greater percentage than what's coming on board. Looking at our seniority of our staff, and we talked about how it looked when I first came. We have a lot of new employees, 16, 1 to 5 category, 31 in the 6 to 10. But look, those that have between '25 and enter their career is on the 6. So we do have a lot of new staff. This chart relates to salaries being paid this year and the rank that each locality is this year. So you'll see our beginning teacher scale. At step zero, we were fifth last year, and we fell this year to eighth. But at step five, since we made that $1,000 change in our scale last year, we went from 14th to 12th. 10 years, we stayed about the same, 24 to 25. Year 15, 47 to 43. 20, 56 to 54. 25, we stayed about the same, and at 30, we stayed the same, almost the same. So you see, we started out as eighth in the state, and by the time we get to the end of our scale, we're 92nd in the state. If you look at the proposed salaries, and this is with that 5% and a half a percent between each step, what those salaries would be, we would be at 53,373 to start, and at the end of the scale, 63,227. If you look at what that goal is, that is what we think the 25th in the state will be next year. And so if we wanted those 20, 25, and 30 to be 25, our scales would need to be adjusted to reflect those numbers we just put in, is included in the budget. If you see where we compete with our target group of where they are, you'll see that it's, we compare really well south of us. We don't compare as well necessarily north of us. Charlottesville and Alamoore, I think we start out better than they do, but I think they beat us every other place throughout, except for the master supplement. In terms of CTE degrees, higher ed schools have changed philosophies over the years. I think they used to offer four-year teacher program, then they stopped for a while and tied it into a five-year master's program. And now they've gone back because of the teacher shortage, and many of them are altering their four-year teacher program now. So we might see some change in that master's degree number go up. And hopefully, they're going to increase the supply of teachers.
Any chance they would change requirements for just bachelors to allow bachelors to come into education without the teaching credentials? Is there any chance of that occurring?
I think that there was some legislation proposed for that this term, but I don't think it went through. I'm pretty sure that it was floored, put on the floor. Those that have the technical license, they're CTE professionals, like our buildings trainees teacher, automotive candidate, automotive mechanic teacher, and our cosmonautics teacher, so they have those technical professional licenses. Enrollment, you'll see that we're actually predicting our kindergarten class to be bigger next year based on the birth rate five years ago from the Virginia Department of Health. And where we're, where we're new students is that this year we have 133 seniors, and we only have 103 juniors moving down. And so the overall loss of students is a difference between the 1472 and the 1454. You can see the enrollment loss over time. It was going from 1829 funded to next year being projected at 1454. Change in one student equates to $4,134 in state revenue. And again, how we've adjusted our budget to accommodate those losses of students. We'll say since in fiscal year '14, we had 168 teaching positions. We're down to below 148 now. Enrollments by school. In fiscal year '17, we had 350 at Rockfish, we're predicting 275. Cow River, 437, we're predicting 361. The middle school, 448, we're predicting 343. The high school, what's it, 625, predicting 536. Thinking about how much our overall population has declined, you don't see the big swings for special ed students. So you'll see, we have 271 K-12 students. And we have 19 pre-K students coming up. But you'll see that number is fairly stable throughout, even though our overall student population is declining, especially with populations are not. Our English language learners are fairly consistent, though we are seeing a change in the locations. Rockfish, I think, is actually our largest population of ELL students. In terms of transportation, we have realigned the positions in maintenance and transportation. We did have a person that was trying to do double moving, and it was just too much of a job. Buses get on the road probably around 6:45 or 7:00 in the morning, I would guess. And nighttime activities, some of them not coming in till 10:11 at night. It was just too much of a day for one person to be able to do. So we do have a director or supervisor of transportation and a supervisor of maintenance. If you look at our number of routes, they have decreased based on one necessity. One, we don't have drivers, but two, to adjust to our declining student number. In terms of maintaining the fleet, DOE recommends a 15-year cycle. We have five buses and six daily route cars that are over 15 years old. We have 28 total vehicles that are 2,004 miles a year or older, and eight daily driver vehicles that are over 200,000 miles. We drive kids to Charlottesville daily, we drive kids to Lynchburg daily. And it doesn't take long, when you're making that commute every day, for those miles to add up. Looking at the price of diesel, in August of '21, we were paying $2.35 a gallon. And February of '22 is at $2.855, or a 21.25% increase. In terms of maintenance and operations, in our budget, we included funds for work to replace carpeting at the middle school and high school and to do some facelifts kind of things in those buildings. We think of the middle school as being a new building, but it was built in 2003. So it's going to celebrate its 20th anniversary next year. And again, fortunately, the high school was built in 54, '75 and '73. Rockfish was built in 1999, and we're still using the same air conditioning rooftop units. They're still working, so we're hoping that they will last another year until we don't have them in our plan for replacement for the coming year. And again, the price of propane, the year that ended, June 28 of '21, we were paying minus 4.9 cents a gallon, and February went up to $1.99 now, or 200.75. So that's pretty much what I have for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you go to, and I have the great privilege of getting to see, I think it was slide 32? It was with the projected enrollment? Go, next one. Or go to three, this one, I got you. For this one, right here. So what do you expect your enrollment to be in '23, total?
1454.
1454?
And the percentage of special needs students continues to go up as the enrollment point drops down. The total number doesn't, doesn't, right?
We said it about, if you're looking at those numbers and looking at that population, we're right around 20% of special needs kids is our total population of students.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Rough numbers, earning the, moving for population, it's about 20% of special ed population.
So, can't remember who this is. Caesar? Who knows? Do you get to go first, or what we were talking about? So we go to the, our comments section.
If we have questions for Shannon, can we ask those now? Or should we do that?
I think it might be better to just go and do all of the questions at question time rather, because I think we're on the same path.
Yeah, let's just wait till after this, that's right.
And that way we can just get it over with. The comments. Do you need this?
So we talked about, you know, the decrease in enrollment, and that's going to play right into the sports and everything that we've been asking for. Safety-wise, it's going to be harder and harder to, for the, you know, some of these sports like football, to fill teams with limited amount of kids. We're having a hard enough time finding coaches to coach our kids because they don't see Nelson as a viable place to come to win because of the limited amount of kids that we have coming out of sports. We had a good year at volleyball with the change of a coach, with the coach that retired last year and handing over the reins to a new coach. There was not much of a decrease in competition there, and they've done very well. We also have a changeover in coaching staff at the, in track and field and now cross-country. The two coaches we have had last year have moved on, which forced us to have to use on our AP on our APs to finish out the season in indoor track and also help in outdoor track. The soccer team is still being coached by community members. We haven't had a lot of staff to help out with the soccer, but it still is a viable program and competitive. We have been fortunate with the baseball, softball this year. We are going to put lights up on the fields. Hopefully, that boosts morale in that area so the girls can, boys can practice later and they can get more games in. And hopefully that decreases the travel that they have to make just to get their games in. So, you know, we talked about it in CIP meetings and, you know, doing field houses and stuff like that, but, you know, we, we have to be able to compete and be competitive to host our facilities so these teams can have something to feel good about. So, you know, we're not asking for anything that, you know, my last comment at the last meeting, you know, we asked the parents and the booster clubs and all these people to partner with us to help us, you know, them raise money so we won't have to come to you all for so much money. But we do need the help from the community. We still need the help from you all, and we would love to get these projects up and going.
That it?
That's my.
All right, thanks Caesar. I'm next. George?
Okay. First of all, thank you everybody for coming. I know this has been something we've been wanting to do. So I'm going to talk a little bit about facilities, maintenance, and transportation. And as you all know, Caesar and I are on the CIP committee. I really appreciate you all working with us to establish that because that works on all the things that I'm about to talk about. One of the things that we need to do with safety in mind, we need to come up with a replacement schedule for our vehicles, for our buses. We currently have a sixty-county reserve buses. We have about a sixty-bus fleet. That would mean to maintain a fifteen-year age, we would have to cycle four buses per year just to keep up with that amount. And it's concerning if we get outside of that fifteen because it is a recommendation. And if you start having problems with buses or God forbid have an accident, that would be the very first thing they would ask is why is this sixteen, seventeen-plus-year-old bus on the road? And then we have to answer for that, why that is. And we want the kids to be as safe as they can be. We also need to do some other vehicles. Our driver-did vehicle will need to be replaced. We need to have a schedule for replacing that. Several of us remember driving that old big Caprice when we were in school. Vehicle's a lot newer than that, but it will need to be replaced. And as was stated earlier, we have, because our special needs students need such services, they go to different jurisdictions. We have kids that are bus, not bus, but traveling cars and vans to Charlottesville and to Lynchburg. And that is a tremendous amount of miles. I mean, you know, I work in Charlottesville every day. It's that's seventy miles a day round trip. Well, that's a hundred and forty days, a hundred and forty miles round trip for a school vehicle because they're making two trips. And in a lot of cases, it's really difficult to combine the number of students because it's so specialized. We're too small a school system up to this point. We've decided that it was more cost-effective to send students to special schools that provide the needs that they, the services that they need rather than hiring to do it in-house. And that's a discussion that we can have, but as of right now, we're using up vehicles at a pretty rapid pace doing that. So we need to establish a schedule for that. On facilities, you know, as was mentioned before, Ty River was opened in ninety-five, Rockfish in ninety-nine, the middle school was built in two thousand and three, and the high school was originally built in fifty-five. There was an addition that was done in the early sixties and then seventy-four, the vocational wing was on, the CTE wing. And then we did some renovations in two thousand and three, and we're coming up on twenty years on that. But it's important to remember that the nineteen fifty's wing of the high school that contains the subway tile on the walls and the original lockers and the tile on the floors and things like that, none of that was touched and neither was some, were some of the backbone systems of the school. And they need to be upgraded because now they're approaching, they're seventy, you know, almost seventy years old. So some of those, and we'll be dealing with whatever they will put down with. Another thing that happened over the last school year, or it might have been in the summer, I can't remember the exact timeframe, we had a near fire with our elevator. And that could have been devastating to the school. That elevator is, I believe, over thirty years old. And we are at the point where we're having trouble if not able to get parts for this. And that's a requirement. We have to have an elevator to transport ADA students up to additional floors. So that's something that's going to have to be taken care of. I'm sure that will be in a capital project. The, you know, our schools are like, you know, the high school, middle school complex, they're like any other large commercial building. The majority of the high school, if not all the high school, has a rubber membrane roof because it's flat with an integrated drain system. And the lifespan on a roof like that's about twenty years. And we know that because we've replaced it about every twenty years. Well, the last one was put on just prior to the middle school being built in two thousand and three, so it's at twenty years. It's ready to be replaced and we're already having leaks. And all the roofing companies will tell you and all the engineers will tell you, that's pretty much all you're going to get out of one. And if you get that much out, you're doing really well. That is a huge item. You know, it's a couple million plus nowadays to do something like that. And we need to, we desperately need to get to where we're planning for these things so that we know that that funding is going to be there and we're not having to have tough conversations about why we need, you know, that extra money. We also need to do some brick demo and repointing as well as correcting an issue on the brick envelope on the high school that allows water to get between the brick and the block, basically. And, you know, we, the way it's supposed to be designed is the brick should be a veneer product that allows water to get between and drain down. And it doesn't necessarily work that way. It gets in and it's getting trapped. And we find that some of our brick ties that were used back in the day are now wearing out. And so some of those are going to have to be replaced with more modern materials that will hold up to the moisture environment that they're in. This is a safety issue on a couple of fronts. One, it can become a structural issue with the facade brick coming off, the veneer brick coming off, but it also can let moisture leach into the school, which could then become a microbial air issue as well. We were talking, Mr. Perkins was talking about a field house. It is extremely important. It always seems like it's a low priority because it's not classroom stuff. But building a new field house that includes concessions and proper restrooms would serve the community really well for outside of it. So I don't know if a lot of you realize this or not, but the current concession stand we have was built, I think, in nineteen seventy-five or six with donated materials and volunteer labor. And right now, unfortunately, the porta-johns that we have running on the field are in better condition than the restrooms in the concession stand. And it's pitiful. It really is. Our facilities are bad enough that we're prevented by VHSL from hosting postseason events. So we can have a football team that does well or a soccer team or baseball, softball, track. We can't host those events, and that's one of the many reasons that we can't, is proper facilities, whether they be handicap restroom or what have you. Sports is extremely important because sports saves a lot of kids, gets them in the right direction where, you know, they could become gap kids, you know, they could fall through the cracks. And there's a lot of kids that have been saved from quitting school or have been helped pointed in the right direction to where they become more productive because of organized sports. And it's extremely important and it's also a community builder. So it's something that we really, we really need to get done. And we've talked a bunch about, like Mr. Perkins said, about community helping fund, but we will need certainly the board supervisors to help us with that funding, either through matching grants or starter money or something like that to try to do it. I think the community will get behind it, but we've got to get something in place. Ty River Elementary still has the issue of not having a barrier between the brick and sheet rock. That presents a concern for microbial growth. As you know, Ty River Elementary School is a metal stud steel-beam building. It is not a center block CMU building with brick veneer. And because of that, when water gets in between the brick and such, then it can get in and get the sheet rock wet and can set up a situation where you have air quality issues. As Ms. Urban explained, the rooftop issue, units at Rockfish River are soon to be twenty-four years old and are near the end of their useful life. You know, anybody that's, if you've ever had to replace the one in your house, if you get twenty-four years out of one, you've really done something. So that could go at any time. And with a lot of these systems, the high school, et cetera, we're running into situations where they can't be supported anymore by the company that manufactures them because the parts and the technology are out of date. So you can't, you can't buy those. We also have, we need parking lot and road improvements at the high school. The road that's used for our bus loop now, that's been used for almost twenty years, is degrading at the upper portion of the large curve that comes around by the middle school. We've had that looked at by an engineering firm. They've identified what some of the issues are and they've come up with repair plans and we've gotten some pricing. The pricing's a little dated right now because of inflation and other things. But that is something that's going to need to happen. It is, it's a deterioration issue that is going to undermine that road and it's just going to continue to get worse. And as we found out through things like the tennis courts, if we let that go, it will become exponentially more expensive. And another thing, I know, I just, real quick, wanted to just say, on the buses, we really need to do something to try to attract the bus drivers. We really need to up that pay. Twenty dollars an hour for a bus driver, they work six hours a day, a hundred and eighty days a year. That means that we're paying a hundred and twenty dollars a day to safely transport screaming kids to and from school. And that's not a lot to ask. And it gives them some hope of a retirement. Right now, the way the bus driver pay is structured, if they do thirty years, they're going to retire on less than five hundred dollars a month after taxes for doing that noble job. And teachers assistants are almost in the same boat. They're working eight hours a day and almost in the same boat, but they're all a hundred and eighty school days a year.
Thank you. That's a good segue into Jan's turn of the talk.
Thank you so much. So first of all, I'd just like to thank each and every one of you. Certainly want to thank the board of supervisors for agreeing to meet with us. Certainly want to thank you for the support that you have provided us throughout the years. We greatly appreciate it. And I would love to publicly thank Shannon Irvin, who has done an absolutely amazing job on our budget from year after year after year. So thank you for all that you do. So the most precious resource that we have in this county is our students. And next to that are the individuals that support our students. So in order for our students to be the best, we have to have the best. And that means the best teachers, that means the best infrastructures, that means the best programs that this county can provide. I will say this for myself and I will say this for absolutely every board member that I'm privileged to be side by side with. We take our role as a school board member seriously. Our job is to advocate for absolutely every single student in that school, and we do that every day. So let's start to talk a little bit about human resources. So I'm sure that none of you were surprised by some of the things that Shannon spoke about. The Great Resignation is here. It is happening not just to school systems, it is happening to absolutely every organization around the state and around the country. Here in our Commonwealth, we have over one thousand unfilled positions. And obviously, this is having a direct effect on us as a school system. I'm sure you heard Shannon talk about some of the vacancies that we continue to have and will continue to have as the years go on. She's talking about bus drivers. She's talking about instructional assistants. She mentioned custodial workers. Technology has not been replaced. Guidance counselors, and that list just continues to go on and on. Without those individuals, our schools will not operate. So when we, as our board, think about these positions, when we think about these individuals, we know and we consider them first-line responders. As I'm sure you are very much aware, there are several roles that are played within our schools that we cannot just have an empty vacancy. Because we are responsible for children, we have got to have substitutes in those roles every single day. So let's talk about those substitutes. Our fill rate for substitutes is only two-thirds, with the other one-third having to be filled by staff members. Now let's talk about those staff members. Unfortunately, they are staff members that have full-time jobs, that are teaching, that we have had to double up on their teaching role in order to make sure that we're meeting our students' needs. They are also individuals that have forego their planning sessions. You can only imagine what goes into a teacher's planning session, that they have had to forego those sessions in order to teach certain classes. In addition, we have had to reassign some of our most valuable instructional assistants. Our teachers need those instructional assistants in order to move throughout the day. But unfortunately, due to not being able to find substitutes, due to the amount of pay, we've had to double up. I'm sure you can understand that this is not a good situation, and it's also not a situation that is sustainable over time. So that is why you see the numbers that you see within our budget. So let's talk a little bit about the minimum wage, which I know that you all are experiencing as well. So the minimum, the increase to the minimum wage has made our support staff scale less competitive overall. We will have to address the salaries in support staff. We've talked about how fifteen dollars is the minimum wage that was set to be in effect in twenty twenty-six. And the entry-level positions for full-time support staff positions in division are barely above the poverty level. Shannon spoke about that in her presentation. Let's think about that. These are the individuals in our county that are your fellow taxpayers, that are making barely above minimum wage. So there are several things that this board would like to do to address that issue. I'll talk about three of them. First of all, we need to fix all the salary scales. That is just across the board. We would love to be able to do all of that this time. But we have, as a board, sat down and started to figure out what are the things that we need to tackle first, and we've narrowed those down to three. So that first topic is to implement half of a percent increase between the seniority steps. And you heard Shannon talk about this. This would start to eliminate that problem that currently exists with our veteran teachers earning the same as our new teachers. That has got to be addressed. The second thing that we'd like to do is to adjust the steps twenty through thirty of the teacher scale to be more competitive. Shannon just showed you a chart that our goal is to be in the twenty-five percentile. And that's where we would love to be. That's where we should be because, again, we need the best of the best. The third thing we'd like to do is to adjust the sports, excuse me, the support staff salary scale to twenty dollars an hour minimum. And that is to compete with the private industry. You've heard George talk about that a little bit and certainly Shannon had that information on her slide. So now, just a few more points. I'd like to transition to health insurance. There's an increase of ten point five percent for the coming year. And our costs continue to go up with over two hundred and ninety-one K devoted to health insurance increase. I don't know if you all heard when Shannon talked about the one claim that we have. I don't know if you all heard when Shannon talked about the one claim that we have that averaged 799K. Insurance is going up. And our staff, our support staff, our teachers that teach our students absolutely every single day deserve to have that insurance. Lastly, I would like to mention professional development for our employees. Again, I mentioned when I started, we want the best of the best. And our students deserve the best of the best. And in order to continue to cultivate that, we have got to provide professional development for our teachers and support staff. So you will see 25K in the budget. And that 25K is to provide coursework, to renew licenses, as well as for our teachers to apply for advanced degrees. So in closing, what I'd like to say is the greatest investment that this county can make is in the future of our children. And just remember that our children, their parents, are your fellow taxpayers. So I want to thank you for recognizing the importance of this investment. And I want to thank you for putting the money in the place where it matters the most, with our students.
Thank you. Ms. Al?
You are next.
I'm next.
It's kind of hard to follow Janet.
Thank you all.
Yeah, and I will not be quite as long. Thank you, guys. Thank you for taking time to meet with us. I know budget season is a tough time and it's a busy time for you all. We appreciate it. We think there's a lot of value in us sitting down together and really intimately understanding the ins and outs of our budgets and the importance of it. You know, my fellow board members have spoken about the logistics of school, the financials. And what I want to speak about is a little bit about extracurriculars. You know, we, we as a system are charged with educating our kids. But it's much more than educating kids. It's managing, it's supporting the whole child. And for many of those children, it goes beyond academics. For us to touch a child, to engage a child, it may take something like band, it may take chorus, it may take FFA. There are a lot of those extracurriculars that are so important within a school system to engage a student. And so your commitment over the years, Tommy, your long-term commitment, how many years now? 30? 35? Many years. Your continued commitment has allowed many of our extracurricular programs, especially in a rural community, to be as successful as they are. And we don't want to do anything that jeopardizes not only the success of the programs, but the opportunity for our kids to engage in school in a different, in a different way. So when we look at those programs, we know that we've got this national award-winning FFA program that engages kids in multiple areas beyond just animals, but it introduces them to welding, it introduces them to agronomy. There's so many things that it introduces those kids to that allow them to maybe platform to a career from that point. And that's due to your investment over the years in supporting that program, even supporting them, Tommy, over the years to go to that national conference. Our teachers and our extracurricular coaches often see things in our students that maybe they don't see in themselves. We see Diana Driver year after year, get kids on stage to sing, to speak, that never had any idea as a student that that was something that they could do. But she saw something in her community, I think it's Peter Coy, saw something in them that gives them confidence. And those are not, those are not easily quantifiable things. We can't look at a test form and go, oh, we grew the student from an 80 to a 95. What we can say about that is that we took a student who was maybe shy, who was maybe reserved, maybe not even, not even engaged in their school community. And they took that student and they got them on that stage, engaged a part of the team and a part of what was happening in school. That's not quantifiable because that experience for that student platforms them into potentially incredible stuff for their career. We also have our band. We know year over year that our band has been an instrumental program for gathering another group of kids that finds, that find a core group of people that give them purpose, that give them things to celebrate. We know over the years that those bands, those band groups have been so successful. Anytime you walk to the cafeteria, look at the trophies. Look at all of the trophies that cover the entire wall of that room. And again, that's attributable to the investment that the school has made in that program, but also you all as a board have made to that program. Because there is a direct reflection in that financial investment and what those outcomes look like. The course, our course remains really great. I don't understand what Luke is saying because it's not within my wheelhouse. But our course has done the same thing that our band and our drama departments have. And that is that they find students that have a gift, a gift that maybe they didn't even know. And so like the band, we have cool students that have been all district concert, all district symphonic, and then all state choir. There's some kids that have been so gifted in that. The tech club, as Shannon spoke of it, you know, we've had some challenges because technology teachers are unique in what their skill sets are. And they're so transferable in a hot economy right now, in a hot market to go. And so we've really struggled this year to maintain some continuity in that program. But within that program, we hope to reengage. We did have with those challenges, the kid win challenge, and these kids took second place in that. But I will tell you, this is our future. Technology is a future that we need to continue within that club to invest and to stay engaged in. And we hope, as they go to rebuild that program next year, that we'll see that club, that extracurricular grow a lot too. The one I think is one of the most important for us though, and Janet touched on this, Shannon touched on this, there is a huge deficit in teachers and education. And even for the rural market, as much as we love Nelson, whether it's affordable housing, whatever that may be, we still have to work hard to draw people here. And we have amazing kids going through our school. We have amazing families that are in our community. And one of the things that we want to refocus them upon is growing from our own. And that's finding kids who are in our own community that want to come back. They are invested, engaged in our community, they want to come back. And so we have started Future Teachers for Tomorrow. And one of the things that they just recently did, I don't know if you saw the Facebook post, but the Mini Governor Camp. We took kids in the school and our teachers, and this was a, it was a double, it was a double win. Our teachers wanted to be able to bring their kids to school when we had professional development days. And so we took kids that were very interested in teaching later on, and we combined those two. They kept those teachers' kids for the day and created a Mini Gov Camp. And it was a resounding success in how that was. But it also gave those kids experience. So I say that very long-windedly to just say that your continued investment in our schools and our extracurricular programs makes a difference. It makes a huge difference. Not only in us being able to say, look at our county and what we did and what our school system did, but in that individual child and what their capabilities and their growth can look like on beyond high school.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming. It is really great to have this meeting, to be able to talk to you guys all and to kind of make our argument or make our points about the budget that we have given to you. We don't do this enough. I think we should, before we leave tonight, set another date, maybe a little bit later, a couple, three weeks from now before, you know, in case you guys come up with any other questions that you want to talk about, and before your budget season is over. I think that we want to start having more cooperation between the two teams. I'd like to see a strategic partnership develop. And, you know, because we have all of these things, we really must work with you on. We can't work in a vacuum and so we rely, we really rely on you guys. I wanted to just kind of point out, you know, that our, really our number one goal is pretty much posted everywhere, is the success of our students. And we have done a pretty good job, I think, especially, you know, even coming out of the pandemic, having to recover from that as, well, we're in recovery, having to deal with that for the last, I think it was three years. I don't know. Maybe it was only one and a half, but it feels like 10. But, you know, we have a long history of success for the kids in our county. You know, we, this year, I think we have 92% graduation rate, which is pretty good. We are always striving for 100%, obviously. Our dropout rate is less than 4%, which is also really good, especially in coming off of the COVID years. We are very competitive in rankings from noted companies that do that, like USA Today. Comparing to our localities, I mean, only, I think, the ones that are north and richer than us, they are better in those rankings. I can get you those charts if you want to see them. And, you know, I think it's already been said in the group that we have an emphasis on not only just preparing or getting the kids through the tests, we want to prepare the kids for what comes after school. And, you know, we do that in terms of, and this is really because of some of the partnerships that we've done in the past with you guys, the early graduation or the PVCC, the early college thing. So like my kids went to school with 60 college credits. Actually, Al has graduated from college before she graduated from high school. And we've sent, I don't know how many kids through that since then. So we're really just giving them a leg up. And then on the CTE, as I did, that side, you know, we're making sure that the kids come out of school with certifications and that they can take and get a job right away, you know, like the CNA program and the automotive program. So we're really trying to take care of them so that while they're in school, they're actually getting stuff that they might have to start otherwise outside of school. So, and, you know, we do, can we get better always? Can everybody get better always? But, you know, we think that there are opportunities, you know, that where we can get better is like addressing some of the gaps that we have in student achievement, that's, you know, surrounding equity issues, socioeconomic or race or whatever happens to be there. You know, coming off, out of COVID, we have behavior issues that we're dealing with, where we need specialized, you know, maybe not necessarily permanent positions to help us deal with those behavioral issues, helping people, like students, get back on track of, you know, being physically present in school after a couple of years of not being in school and just understanding, you know, getting over some of the trauma that we've all been in. And, you know, the challenge of our composite index, you know, where we happen to be a really rich, land-rich county, and that is just a killer for our budget, you know? It just means that you guys have to help us that much more, which it's, you know, we just have to rely on you, you know, that much more. And, you know, the challenges of a rural setting, we have, we can afford fewer opportunities. But, you know, even though we do, our rural, I think Nelson does a really great job of getting out there and trying to make opportunities, partnering outside of the school itself with rec or, you know, with you guys or, you know, with the community in general to make those opportunities and make them happen so that it's just better, a better experience overall for the student because that's our first goal. So, you know, like I said before, I hope we always have, you know, I hope we can, this is like, you know, the starter, just like a regeneration of a really cooperative relationship between the two boards. We are trying to be as transparent and honest and like showing you everything that you need to see, answering all your questions. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much. Of course, sometimes it always feels like getting from a fire hose info and of course we understand that. Like as was mentioned, cooperation is very key. Hopefully we can have a better or cooperative relationship in the future. I think at this time, we're getting to the phase where comments, questions. Mr. Barton, you want to kick us off?
Well, any questions?
Just be mindful of your time. Thank you.
We're not talking about time, we were talking about children. And I think because it was very insightful what all you guys said because the experience being in the school board must be an incredible learning experience to find out all the things that the schools do. We are facing problems here, it's obvious, together. We're going to have to solve them together. We're going to have to do that. We're going to have to cooperate and find ways in which maybe save money or spend money where it's appropriate. I mean, when we can do that, why not? What I want to talk about is what you said, we are a labor-intensive industry and teachers. And I feel singularly qualified to talk about teaching and what it entails and how one feels about it. There was actually a book written about me. About why does a teacher stay for 30 years or 40 years, whatever I did? And there are a lot of reasons for it. Mostly it's because you feel like you're doing something. You feel like you're cooperating, you're helping the community, you're helping children. But one thing that is important that I think we need to understand, that COVID was like a body punch at the end of a fight. You know, we were, I felt as teachers, I mean, you people know me, you know I had retired because my wife got sick in 2010, just at the time when all this stuff was being placed on teachers. And I like to think I would have put up with bitter fighting. But what, I don't impugn the motives of those who thought that no child left behind was a good idea. I mean, SOLs are fine, the tests are fine. What was wrong was the draconian punishments for not passing the test and the pressure that put on school boards, you, and the pressure it put on teachers and administrators. And University of Virginia in particular, I like that, instead of saying, this has unintended consequences, which we didn't see coming, and now it's not working, we need to stop. We need to find a new way to deal with this. No, we didn't do this. We went on and on. And teachers who were professional, who saw that their responsibility was to their clients, to their children, to their parents, stopped having fun. And the most important thing in school, in the classroom, is having fun. It's not being threatened that you're not going to pass the test. Parents were threatened by that. The teachers were threatened by that. Children were threatened by that. And then COVID, which takes the children away from the teachers, where the teachers got their energy from, you know, that's, you, that's where your energy as a teacher came from, what was the students became, you know? Rile broke down, you know, let's admit it, and all sorts of things. Now, I see your budget as an attempt to turn that around. You know, somehow get to a point as a, as a community, we recognize that we had, there are problems and we need to address those problems. And as Jesse points out to me, I never have any solutions. I just do a good job pointing out what the problem is. The problem is teachers need to be excited about teaching. They need to feel that what they do is valued. Now, salaries are important, but not nearly as important as them being treated as professionals and having administrators who recognize what teachers aren't acting as professionals to get rid of. I mean, I see education as, we do fine, and we do fine. And this is a wonderful place, but we can do better. And we need to make our children think for themselves. We need to make them responsible. We, I go into the school and we were talking about freedom the other day. And they're all going, freedom is being able to do what you want to do. And I said, no, freedom is a pain in the butt. It implies responsibility for what you do. And you have to know something, you have to know the consequences of what you're doing to be responsible. And that's what education is about. And we're responsible to our community to do the best we can because we believe in the ability of all children to think, you know? See?
I like that. That was a good job, Sam. Perfect.
You were under time. You were under time.
Oh, my God.
You've got two more minutes. Keep going. Give you some more time.
There's a few main questions to ask you in terms of, you know, how are we going to, we need, how are we going to do this?
Let's have a.
You know, it's not going to be easy.
Then we'll do the questions.
Hold your fire.
Yeah.
Ernie's turn.
Yeah. I've got questions for Shannon that I want to ask.
Yes, this is that time.
This is it.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'll finish up real briefly, even shorter than.
Yeah.
So, given unfulfilled positions that we've had year after now year, but it's getting bigger, the budget is a full employment scenario.
It is.
It is. So at the end of your fiscal year, when you have unfulfilled positions, does that money end up in a reserve at the end of the, at the end of the year? How does that work out?
It typically reverses back to the county. And so last year, if you look at the audit report, we turned back $1.9 million to the county. Part of that was for two major projects that we started, but we didn't finish in June 30. So we've had that re-appropriated. So we had the greenhouse re-appropriated, and we had the secure entries project re-appropriated. But they did return to the county coffers. So this coming year, we've been looking at those positions that haven't been filled. We've been looking at any changes in salary to bring in a new employee less than what the exiting employee was. We've looked at health insurance participation. And we've identified funds that are unobligated based on where we are today, which is how we're funding the lights at the baseball field. And so we have basically, I want to say moved funds from wherever we had an extra dollar for putting it all into facilities to try to get those lights done because that's been something that our parents have petitioned us to do. And I'll speak as a baseball mom. When you have a baseball coming at you at 85 miles an hour, you want to be able to see it. So it was a priority of the board, a priority of our parents, and we found a way to make it happen.
Normally, though, that money would come back to the county?
It would have. And previously, the boards had a kind of a gentleman's agreement that funds that were left over at the end of the year would be re-appropriated to the schools to do some capital projects. So we've got a capital improvement plan of about $32 million worth of projects to be done when funds are available.
Okay. Thank you. I forgot, the very first thing I wanted to do was to thank everyone who were there for what they had to say and the fact that you divided it up. I'd like to hear from everybody, the areas of your expertise. I hope that was great. So thank you for helping us with that. Substitute teachers. I spent three years of my life being a full-time substitute teacher.
Can we sign you up?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
You start tomorrow.
Right. Are the substitute teachers considered support staff? Are they dealing with the same structures as the rest of your support staff?
I'm not sure of the question.
How much do the substitute teachers get paid?
Yeah. So we have three different rates. We have a non-degree rate, a degree rate, and then a long-term sub. Long-term sub would be a person that's subbing for a teacher for an extended amount of time and has to do all the lesson plans and the grading and all of that stuff that goes along with a regular class. And so it starts at around $85 or so per day.
Okay. And $85 a day?
It's just a little over minimum wage.
Is $85 a day over minimum wage?
Yeah, currently. I think it's $11 now as minimum wage, seven and a half hours a day.
So the increases that you're talking about, support staff, would include?
Yes.
Substitute teachers?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll consider it.
Great retirement.
Right, right. So special ed, a lot of my stuff was in special ed that I did. And I taught special ed in every school in Charlottesville, every public schools. And I saw the value of having in-house special ed in each of those schools because, for all the reasons you might already know. So I just wanted to put in a plug for that, especially given the transportation and the commitments that we have in terms of getting students to other places. I just, I don't know how y'all prioritize such things, but that's something that's important to me.
Just to point out, because I did want to talk about special ed, I'm on the prep board, and the prep is the Piedmont Regional Education, whatever. And that is specifically to serve the needs of their partner schools for physical therapy, all of the different therapies that they need. So the school for way less than we would have to pay to provide those services in-house can sign up with prep and order what we need that particular year. And it changes, you know, based on the students, what we need. And then we have itinerant. People come in and work with those children. And we have, you know, speech, vision, we have all kinds of abilities through that. And it is a fabulous program. You should come to a board meeting with them sometime if you want.
Okay.
It's really fabulous. And for a fraction of the cost, we would pay.
Right.
ID, ID, heat school. So for special, for the kids that need to have.
I'm familiar.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Which is still a fair amount of money, though.
Well, it was only, it was less than 1% of the budget.
I know that. But I mean, when you look at it per child, that's a.
Yeah. I don't think that that's a fair comparison, but I'm myself in special.
Yeah. But it does, you know, given, given the fact, I mean, the reality of the situation is that the, is the, the children's needs in terms of both special ed and mental health are going to continue to be significant. On the Nelson County Community Wellness Alliance, which includes councilor in middle school and high school, as part of that, we don't see them all the time because they're really busy. But they pitch in when they can. You know, we get, we get to see firsthand from them ways that the community can try to support what's going on in schools. But in doing so, you find out, you know, how difficult it is. I just wanted to bring that up. So those are my questions. My comment is, was something that was inspired by something you said about the SOQs and how that puts pressure on everybody. But I also have noticed in my five years here that there's a metaphor for that in terms of what happens in the county. Because the county, starting at the very top, really sets the tone for the priorities of the county. And if there's pressure applied at the top, and it starts at the superintendent level and the school board level, that also filters down. That also goes to the principals and to the teachers and ultimately to the students. And I think I can say that I've seen that, and I've seen it in action. And it's been one of the most difficult things for me to get my head wrapped around. And it's not just in terms of the budget. And I, and I want to emphasize, it's not just in terms of the numbers. So I'm very hopeful that this is something that our relationship can do, which is relieve that pressure in ways that can set a positive tone and have that pressure release trickle down. Because if we are successful in doing that, which is really, you know, within our, our ability to do, if that's something that we can do and start that positive force in motion, then I think that we're going to have a much, you know, and this, and this format, and meeting at least twice a year, at least once during budget season, this presentation before we go to the budget is absolutely so valuable, so valuable. I've, I've been fortunate to sit in a lot of school board meetings, so I got to see this twice. Believe me, the second time you see it, it starts making sense. And you start understanding things. And so, and the other thing that I've seen is just how incredibly lucky we are that you all are the ones that are on the school board. Because what you have, you know, the dedication and the work you guys do, and the pressures that are on you to try to provide those things that are, that are your responsibility is just huge. And I'm just very grateful to y'all for, for all you do and for really making this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Harvey.
Well.
Give us some of those 35 years.
I'm very proud of that school board, I'm going to tell you. There's no way you would ever find me on a school board. First of all, you're dealing with somebody's child, everything you do. You're dealing with parents that sometimes just don't understand and the charge to, you know, educate our kids. It's been a good ride. And I mean, the school system is always running very high on the county's budget. We have, can't you ever give you everything you need? We hope we give you what you need and not what you want. But these times, I've been trying, you think, well, my gosh, look how tough it was last year. And you think, well, man, it's going to get a little bit better. But now, it's worse than what you thought it was before. We've got a tough job in a rural area like this. And, you know, we don't have the wealthiest taxpayers. And we kind of, and what happens is we've got two different groups. We've got two. What we ought to do up here that, yeah, they don't care what taxes are. But yet, anything you do for taxes, it's going to affect the ones on the lower end.
Well, guys, thank you all. This has been a very good meeting. As has been mentioned before, I think one of the most important things that we could do is have these discussions consistently and these conversations. Obviously, you can't come up with all the answers within three hours. You hear about a lot of the struggles that people have. And I don't just hear it from school board. I have had plenty of interactions with teachers, with school nurses, with support staff, bus drivers. And the fact that a lot of people don't know is I have a unique relation to the bus driver world. And I used to be, have the only vending machines feeding all the bus drivers at 5:00 in the morning. So I, every single one of them has my phone number still. So I've had the opportunity to kind of talk about what the struggle is with the school bus driver not having, you know, a proper pay. And of course, with that, Nelson County has itself a unique situation. We are a rural county. Though it's unique, it's also consistent across rural America and even especially rural Virginia, shrinking school populations. And we're not unique to that. That's everybody. You've seen it in the school board president world. And it's something that we, as local governments, have to figure out, how is it that we balance? How is it that we support? How is it that we see the future of our county? You know, Nelson County is not necessarily a growing county. We have spent a lot of time and effort in trying to target areas. And one thing that I, one of our greatest accomplishments, I would easily say this decade, and maybe the last couple, is securing universal internet connection. That is a struggle that not many counties can look at itself and say they've done. And we've got a lot of credit to give Mr. Harvey here for being in the beginning of that. But the question is, is how we move forward? What is it that the county itself can do? How it can provide? Obviously, the needs are there. You know, how is it that we can look at you all and say, well, Dagnabbit, what's a dollar number? You know, you guys give us a dollar number, and yet, we're sitting here asking ourselves many different questions of, well, how can we get here to there? Or is it somewhere in the middle? Or is it not? And you know, the question of the state, I will say time and time again, the biggest reason why we have these struggles is because the state itself never pays their part. They're the ones who made the promise to have a high-quality, free education. Hey, you know, we want to support that too. But we weren't the ones who went and made it, make all these unfunded mandates that all of a sudden trickle in, and then we're stuck with another $100,000 bill that we weren't counting on five years ago. So how is it that we balance all those things and also look to the future? I mean, I would imagine, generally speaking, we would like to see an increase in school population, maybe not an increase, at least a stable one. Because it is very difficult to budget. It is very difficult to run your school system and predict your personnel needs when you're losing 40 to 50 students a year. And we recognize that. And that's huge. And we want to make sure that we're not the ones who are causing that problem, but are the ones fighting it. Trying to make sure families of a lower income bracket can live here. Speaking for the families in Schuyler, I can't tell you how many times I have a conversation with a mom about what it's like to be a single mother raising three kids. You know, I was talking to a lady the other day and how she's like, it's just hard. I can't get my kid to the sports facility. I can't get my kid to the extracurricular. I can't because it's, I've had so many things against me. And then the conversation of taxes, and I can't pay my car tax, and they're going to pull the tags and put a block on it so I can't renew my, my tax. Those things are all difficult conversations that we all have to walk and make sure that we're balancing. You know, obviously, questions that I generally have is, the birth rate is a huge question. And Shannon, this one's kind of at you. And Mr. Cox, you have many decades that I appreciate from your workforce. You know, I see that huge impact in our elementary schools, you know. There's, that's some good news that I heard about kindergarten having the potential to increase. That's just one year. I guess the future, you know, is what is our children's population going to be? And how is it that we can help bring young families to this community? And, you know, one thing you always ask is, is the data always right? Is who we are getting, is it generally, you know, within 10, 20% of being accurate for future birth rates? Do you think, generally speaking, they're?
So I've got 2017, there were, so 2016, there were 115. But next year, in 2017, there was 148. So we picked up 33.
That's great. That's good.
2018, it's 136. 2019, 137. 2020, 136.
Gotcha.
So it seems to be stabilizing.
That's good. That was very good.
And so that does seem to be a trend, which is good. That's kind of what you look for with that period.
Great.
That you see a trend.
And we don't know what the new housing developments will do.
Sure. And that's, of course, another big piece, affordable housing. Where are these families going to live? Well, more important than that is obviously where the kids, but where's the teacher going to live? Because if you have a teacher that lives in athletics, you know, eventually, they're going to look for an opportunity that's near them, that fits their lifestyle. And as someone had mentioned, if you're living in Outlaw eventually, you're going to find yourself teaching in Outlaw.
And 10, 15, 20 years out, when that pay scale catches up, that's when they, that's when what happens. And we lose our most experienced teachers when that happens.
Sure.
And look at our 25 and 30 years, we only have three in each category, right?
The most successful school systems are the ones that have, and that'll take anything away, but the ones that, the people that are involved in the system are engaged in the community. They want to be a part of that community. And we see that even, even for teachers that have to travel in to their community, they still want to be here outside of school hours, doing stuff and participating. But if we can provide that housing for them to be here 24/7, 365, then that benefits everybody in the long run.
And that comes with the strategic conversations we have to have. It's not even just as a Nelson County, it's a regional conversation as well. You know, we don't have a growing housing supply. It's a shrinking one, if not stagnant. And where that, wherever the growth is, it's not in the side that can afford to build it. And that's.
I think there are some, there are some moves toward making things more affordable. You know, I was just talking to the land trust today, and they were talking about a couple of different developments that they had. And they want to partner with me here in the county to see if we can make that work here in the county. And that's just where the land trust owns the land, and it just makes everything more affordable. And it also kind of, anyway, I could get into it. I could talk for an hour on housing. Sorry.
I'll give you a phone call tonight.
I know.
You know, I, you know, generally, generally speaking, you know, the question is, what do we see the future of Nelson County going to be? How is it that we, as a county, can posture ourselves for the best success in both our school system and also ourselves as a government? And seeing how it is, and I think everyone agrees, that a young family, especially lower-income and working class, can afford to live in this community and participate in our school systems. So, and I, that is such a difficult thing to figure out. So, and I, that is such a difficult thing to figure out in the dynamic of today.
Well, you know, the cost of materials and all that stuff.
It's, it's a tumble.
It seems, it seems to me it's possible to have a concept of affordable housing within the smaller area, park-like environment like you're doing over there, but not for the wealthy folks who are, I know, we're not gonna argue that. But I mean, just for the working people, the people in Nelson County. I mean, someone's gotta come up with that idea, you know? There are people, you know? There are people that are thinking about that, and that's good.
I was really moved by Seager's presentation on the value of the sports facilities and the investment in now that it's being moved in schools, but also in the community. I thought that was huge.
Because we, you know, some of our facilities play a dual role, you know, as rec facilities. And, you know, we, we try to provide the best facilities for, you know, school functions and rec functions. And we have to pay people to be there, you know? And I don't know how much we get reimbursed for, you know, from the rec department, but we still have to have somebody there to open and close and clean up after. And, you know, and we use two out of three of our facilities just about every weekend for some type of rec program, especially in the fall sports.
These are so true. I mean, think when we were all kids, Tommy, you too, I mean, the schools were the center of their recreation outside of school hours. I mean, that's, and we still see that, you know? Drive by any of the schools after hours, and you're gonna see some kids playing basketball. Somebody's on the tennis court, you know? So there is this community sense that they feel ownership in those facilities as well, and they utilize them every day. And we want to keep, I mean, we want to still stay school-focused but community-centric, right? We want to keep the community at the center of everything that, that we're doing for our students.
I mean, the first, the first warm week we had, there'd be more people walking that track, you know, that was, you know, redone. And because it's a community track. I mean, when you go past there and you drive behind the school, there's dozens of people walking that track. You know, every, especially in the warm months.
And now that it's been redone, it's fantastic.
Yeah.
I mean, one of, some of the questions that we might have for you guys as the holders of the county budget would be things like, I mean, we know there's a contingency budget that's uncategorized or something like that. You know, what's the size of that? You know, what, how is it usually used? You know, in your planning, have you, how do you plan for your CIP projects? And how does our plan fit into that? So, I mean, I'm not asking you to answer these questions now. I might send you an email later. But, um, some of those questions are kind of key to the conversation that we have so that we can find ways to work together, especially when we're talking about starting a strategic planning, you know, and then the zoning and things like that. I think we want to be able to have open conversations around those, the aspects that affect us.
Yeah. So I've had, no, one second, so we can get to her questions.
Well, I'm just trying to.
We're gonna get to those. So I think one of the things that I, me and Candy had interacted, and we were, and Candy, I did, believe, did pull some numbers of what non-recurring and recurring is. Obviously, non-recurring is a money that we collected at one time, and it ain't necessarily producing that same number again, whether that's year over year, whether that's a sale of a property, whether, who knows? Could be several different items, or it could be, you know, lodging did better this past year or not. Then you have recurring, which is typically your real estate tax rate, your personal property tax rate, machine and tools, food and lodging. And that's the recurring world that we typically operate when allocating recurring expenses, such as operations, salaries, wages, fringe benefits, whatever that might mean. And I think Candy, you got a couple quick numbers that where we're at, don't you?
I mean, right now, with there being no revenue enhancements in, in the budget, so the introduced budget with no revenue enhancements. Um, we currently have about a nine hundred and some thousand dollar, um, recurring contingency. And that's current revenue over current expenditures within the budget. And so as the board works through the budget, you know, that changes as they add, you know, different expenditures and things like that. But right now, it's around a nine hundred thousand.
That's about where we're at after all we've done so far.
Yeah, there's no, I believe, no.
I don't think we have any no new.
Actually, I think we have about four hundred thousand in non-recurring contingency, which is money to be spent only on like one-time items.
Right.
Like, for me personally, I'm dependent on you really to see what can be done and, and to find ways that we hadn't thought about that might be possible to do. I mean, I, I don't think we're stuck in a spot that we can't come up with some idea to make the situation a little better, a little better at a time, you know? I mean, just.
Right. I mean, and to date, the revenue enhancements that, um, the board has discussed are mostly to provide the debt capacity to fund debt service related to some capital projects that you all have been talking about. And that includes some of the school capital funding projects. I mean, that's in the mix, um, you know, but we just can speak to this. I think the board needs a better sense of what, what those projects need to be.
Right. And obviously, so, and I, I think you're, you're gonna be asking questions about, you know, generally speaking, what is the, what is gonna be the future of some of those monies? And that's the conversations that we need to have, obviously strategically, and how much and where. This board has postured itself a couple of weeks ago in being very aggressive with your capital improvement plans, your projects. And I've discussed with several of our board members about that potential, you know, and how we can aggressively take, take care of a lot of these two comma projects. And you guys got a bunch of them.
We got a school that was built in nineteen fifty-four. That's the same.
Whereas we, correct me if I'm wrong, whereas, uh, recurring costs, we really don't have, you know, control over what those line items are. But in terms of capital, we can allocate things for specific, we can target specific things.
Sure.
And that gives us a little more idea of what we can do.
And so I think this board is already committed to some of the projects ever mentioned, such as the brick facade and the roof. So I think it's important that you guys keep that in mind, which is several million dollars, if I'm not mistaken. You know, the question that we, as a board, we're trying to figure out is which monies we were gonna utilize or some of the potential we could utilize ARPA? Well, now we got, uh, safe, uh, EMS and fire departments looking to acquire some new equipment. So, you know, we, but either way, we have committed to those projects. We did a vote, and it's, we're going forward. So that is some good news that I think you guys can maintain, knowing. But yeah, as it always comes down to the recurring expense, you know, how is it we can help? And where, what dollar numbers make sense? This board, we're, there is a potential that the transient occupancy tax, which is your lodging, we're looking to increase that, potentially increase that from five to ten percent, which has some potential revenue. Are we, is that in our mind with that nine hundred thousand, or is that above the?
No, that would be in addition to.
In addition. And that addition would probably, could be between one and one point three mil, or probably, you know, it's a guess of about one point three million. We're pretty good about it. Struggle with some of those taxes is when COVID first hit, you know what happened to Airbnb in the first four months? Bang, all the bookings were gone. So some of that's fluid. So it's really hard with a tax like that to take on a major, uh, recurring expense because of how fluid it can be. But, you know, you could take a pretty safe bet on four or five hundred thousand.
But what Ernie referred to when he talked to about, you know, the fact that the, um, the number, the average value of the house, home in Nelson County's gone up, and the number of people, students who are going to school has gone down, meant that the average cost of a student was, was gonna go up if, if, if we maintain the same sort of amount of money we were spending.
Sure.
At, at, but at this point, in this crisis, with these children falling behind in social and academic ways, we have to take that into account. We might have to increase the number of, the amount of money that we give the school system to deal with these problems. We just have to think about that.
And I know, I know money is always tough. I know, I know that, I mean, I've looked at, at your budget, right? As much as, as I can understand everything anywhere that's really long, and I don't envy you a bit having to put all that together. But about twenty years ago, as a county, we decided to enter into this master plan, comprehensive plan, where we were gonna try to become an agro-tourism, uh, economy. And we've done a very, very good job with that. I mean, we're about the brewery, winery, distillery capital of Virginia. Um, and it's great because lots of people get to come and experience the duty and friendship and everything of Nelson County. The downfall of that is, um, you know, as we've talked before, it's, it's hard to, it's hard for the county to make a lot of money off of that. You know, the state says, your index number is this because this is what your property's worth. But in agro-tourism economy, then, you know, we, we have to give some of that away in landings. And so we don't really have it, you know? So, um, I don't know where the answers are to that. But I look forward, and I really, really appreciate you all doing this. But I appreciate everything that you all have done in the past, and Tommy, especially with you. You've been such a big supporter. And, you know, when we worked on the track, for example, you know, we hit a hiccup in that track and realized we had an onsite meeting. So we had to go walk the track, and so we could actually physically see, all of us, and Tommy was there, I was there, to see what was going on and what, why, why the problem was. Once we saw what the problem was, you, it was no, it was no issue. Well, this is the problem we got, we gotta fix it. And, and I hope we can bring that kind of thinking to bear on the problems that we're facing now. Because I can tell you, for me personally, I am somebody that is, I, I would much rather have level funding on a normal year and come to you and ask for more money in capital so that we can do better, you know, more capital projects to upkeep and improve things. But this isn't an ordinary year. And, um, we are competing with school districts that are dropping four percent on their employees today, and an additional five percent comes July one. And that's the labor market we're competing with right now. Um, and, and, you know, and I know you don't have a print press for money. We don't either, you know? Because we have to come to you for all the funding. But, but that's the reality that we're living in. Everybody's living in it. But everything that you all are having to deal with on your, uh, scale as far as employees, you know, when you look at what it costs for us to give a one percent raise, for example, you know, it's so much more. So, but, but thank you for everything that you all do and the support that you're, that you're giving and taking the time to do this to me.
So, and we can give you some, oh, Candy, sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to address something that Mr. Barton said. In terms of, you know, learning laws and the pandemic, just keep in mind too that the school vision is getting a lot of federal funding to address those issues. Millions of dollars. So that's important to keep in mind as well.
As part of the conversation.
Part of the conversation.
The school board has to recognize that too. You all have to, all those things. So.
And we do, but it's temporary.
Right, it is temporary. It's for a couple of years, for a few years. And I know everybody here is probably cognizant that, you know, county, we're on a four-year reassessment cycle. And real estate ends and flows. And the past posture of past boards has been to, you know, you live off whatever gains you have in that four-year period, so it's not to have to raise taxes, you know, within that four-year period. That's been, that's been the posture of past boards.
Right, right.
So, um, you know, just keep in mind that, you know, this was a reassessment year. You know, the values went way up. And the board is, has proposed a reduction in the tax rate to try to mitigate, you know, that high cost for existence. I just want to put that out there so that everybody kind of understands that that's kind of the, you know, previous posture of the boards and how the whole reassessment, um, you know, scenario has worked in the past.
And, and some of those things that we, we've worked hard in this budget cycle, and the board generally speaking, was in a consensus, was trying to impact the most people we could, such as cars. Everyone's car value went up. The who, the, those who struggled the most is our lower-income demographics. So there was a full, there was interest in fully equalizing that. So, you know, the question then came down to, you know, how much of the tax revenue are we gonna keep? You know? And what is the dollars in sense that we are willing to maintain? You know, so that, we generally got to a consensus of about sixty-five, sixty-six cents, somewhere in that range, to maintain, increase things, and see where we're at.
Yeah, that's, that's an effective tax rate of a tax increase of about twelve percent.
Right.
So I think one of the things to consider and understand what you're saying, um, just about the tax rate and, and trying to minimize the impact of the, the raised assessments for everybody. But keep this in mind, you know, as a school system, we're one of the largest employers in Nelson County. So when we say we are trying to move people above the poverty level, that directly, as Janet noted, that directly impacts the taxes and the money that is able to be spent in this county, and it benefits. Anytime you can elevate someone, whether it's their ability to spend or even just their ability to, to, to live safely, um, there, there's a positive impact to the larger county for us doing that. So, so while we, we are saying there are things we'd like to do with pay, there's a benefit to that that comes back to the county because we are lifting up the people within our community and our county with that pay. There's something like that.
Totally agree. I mean, with the teachers you're attracting, with this money, you're putting it back into the community.
But it's more than teachers. It's whether it's their, their paraprofessionals, it's whether it's their custodians.
Yeah, but that money goes directly back into the community. To money to those people.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so there's, there's a return benefit to that selfishly, yes?
You know, you just think about how many households have both parents that work in this county, and that's very deep. I was fortunate, both of my parents worked in, worked in the county and was able to make a decent living. But, you know, for most of our households, we have to commute at least thirty-five miles a day to, to make a decent salary to support our families. And, you know, for those that did work in the county, you know, just because they have the luxury of being in the county, they still have a carrying cost. So, you know, I think somewhere down the road in, uh, you know, the grand plan, you know, are we gonna create more jobs here? You know? You know, with the growing part of needing, you know, housing and all that stuff? I mean, you know, one decent apartment building could, you know, do wonders with one, with, with one.
That's a good answer. No, you're good. Right, I agree with you. And, you know, that always trickles into where people live. I mean, my, my family and, I mean, so many others were part of the extraction-based economy that used to be here, the soapstone quarry, you know? It used to be out in Ponty River, the, the, whatever groups, you know? That was a huge economy here in Nelson. And as those economics shifted, we see, I mean, we could look and go all day about the effects, and it's serious stuff. And, you know, even further than that, we got some statistics, I think it was back in twenty nineteen, about the estimated number of people who commute into Nelson County to work, especially in the hospitality industry, which was shocking. I think, you know, it was a huge number, you know? Those are all things. I wonder what it is.
I think it's eighty percent, I think it's, I think eighty percent either go out or in, and only twenty percent work here, out of, you know? So I have, can't remember which ones are out and which ones are in.
Candy, just one more thing. I, I don't think everyone else has this information. Can you remind us what the value of Candy is in terms of tax rate?
Um, it's roughly three hundred and fourteen thousand. And that's real estate tax.
Three forty, our personal property is miniscule relative to that. Yeah.
And before we end this, I'd like to thank Shannon for her diligent work every year.
Oh, yeah.
I also thank Candy for her work that she does. I know it's a tough spot for both of y'all to be in, and, um, we all have our wants. We got a lot, a lot of wants, but we got a lot of needs also. So we appreciate the time y'all put in on the other faces.
I, I would also like to recognize Dr. Cox for just stepping in in kind of an uncomfortable space possibly and just being so cheerful and such a great leader, and I really appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And believe it or not, Dr. Cox likes Nelson County. He likes it.
We're trying to get him here.
And that, we should never forget that in planning what we do.
I really like Nelson.
He's got sucked into the web.
So, um, pass me forward, plan of action.
Well, as far as we're concerned, we have offered you our budget of need. Um, I don't think there's any other work unless you have some additional questions that you want to come back to us with.
I think, obviously, I, is my suspicion that this board will not meet this week. Talking of board supervisors, will likely meet next week on a Tuesday, which is what I'm suggesting, bringing ourselves a week off, um, since we wore-
We'll meet this evening.
My, my work is suffering, so I need to get caught up really bad, too. Don't think in Tuesday next week.
Yeah.
Can we, can we meet in, I think, Tuesday, or is that bad?
I can, but we got staff. We wanted to get, let's do like, let's do like three, yeah, three o'clock or something.
It's a regular board meeting, right?
That's gonna, it's our work session. We're talking about our work session. So, I was just telling y'all our plan of action. So, hopefully, we can get our budget generally wrapped up. Next week would be my goal. I think that's the-
And I can be available.
And what, but I was hoping and extending was that the school board make themselves individually available for questions, comments, and any one-on-one or two-on-two meetings in the next week or two. Um, just as we're looking at our budget, and then next week's gonna be an aggressive week, so if we want any clarifications, of course, we know how to get ahold of Shannon, but for the conversations, you better answer that.
What, what time Tuesday?
I'm, I don't know. That's to like three. I really-
Three, I love three.
Three's good.
All right.
All right, and we have our, uh, regular school board meeting on the seventh.
It's really nice seeing y'all.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, what Dr. Cox is saying, chairs, do we want to go ahead and set a date for the next one, just?
For January.
I would do it.
While we're in the middle of this.
And I don't know, CIP wants to set something up at some point, too.
We're talking about a double four.
Yeah, double four meeting, and then maybe CIP wants to-
Within one timeframe.
Well, the fourteenth unfortunately is during school break, school.
I don't, I don't know that we need the meeting going during budget cycle.
Oh, no, no, no. Just that next meeting, just because we, one of the things we've just committed as a board is to continue to do this. So, sometimes it's easier to leave a meeting with the next date.
Well, you know, yeah.
The problem is, next Tuesday, we're gonna have a tough meeting.
Tuesday's gonna be another-
It's gonna be a tough meeting.
Yes.
And after that, we'll, we'll know where we're at.
And obviously, budgets aren't finalized till the public hearing. Yeah, it's always that way. So, there's always that proper due diligence we, we as a government are required to do, and we want to do. Um- Yeah, let's just do like, I don't know, either end of the summer or fall. I could, I think August is a fair question, fair proposal.
It doesn't have to be that long.
Or July.
You would miss us.
Skip, I think you're gonna see me twice a week every week.
Leave me out.
What do y'all think? What are y'all's feelings? Take a month.
June.
June?
You know, we have our new superintendent starting July first, but we like to do that first.
Yeah, we should do it.
Well, there you go.
Well, she can come in early to, for things like that, because you're-
I think June is easier because, I mean, I'm sure everybody had some type of vacation planned.
Let's do the end of June, twenty-nine. That's a Wednesday.
Did you get that, Candy?
I'll be here.
You don't like Wednesdays? That's why.
We have a Friday due off, so we can do a Friday.
We could do June, that's July first. Nobody else has a meeting.
How about if we have June twenty-fourth?
I would be out of town.
Whatever.
Cause nobody likes-
What about the one-third?
How about a Tuesday?
I'm out of town like-
Friday's Tuesday.
How about we do the middle of June?
Well, why don't we do the evening, and we all have to make Candy work?
What about?
The evening.
You got butter ass.
What about the night?
Sure.
June night?
Yeah.
I'll be out of town then, too.
Julie, why don't you tell us when you're in town?
I, the sixth, seventh, eighth, thirteenth is the day before our board supervisor meeting. That's a Monday. That's a great idea. June thirteenth. That's June.
It's a Monday.
Oh, yeah.
That's my birthday.
Well, me and Skip are having a meeting on our birthday, so-
Yeah, we have the same birthday.
What is it, like, October thirty-first? Oh.
And my son-in-law is the same birthday.
Remember, Skip and I both like cheesecake.
My son-in-law likes it. I can't figure it out.
What do we say, June thirteenth?
I, I say-
It could be a holiday. No, June, June nineteenth is the twentieth.
The twentieth.
Right?
Yeah, that's weird.
It's actually the nineteenth.
Yeah, nineteenth and twelfth.
Let's do the thirteenth. That's the day before our board supervisor's meeting, so we'll have stuff to talk about the next day. How's that sound?
Okay.
Six o'clock-ish. Pencil it in.
Oh, in the evening?
Yes.
Y'all do whatever you want.
June, are you okay, Seager?
Please, just make the table.
That's-
Seager, can you, can you do six on a Monday?
I will do my best. I get off at five-thirty, and I will light twenty-nine at the-
I was gonna say, what you like on?
We'll do six-thirty.
No, because I'll just take one person to see me, and then it's like- Yes. So, we say six-thirty on the thirteenth.
That's fine, yes.
Which month would that be? I lost, you guys?
Yours twenty-twenty.
I don't know. Six-thirty, why so late?
Easy.
Some of those don't work right down the street.
Yeah.
What do you say?
I mean, y'all can do it at two o'clock if you want, but I won't be there.
All right, um, we can pencil, we'll have that in. We'll confirm as we get closer, make sure everybody's still good for that. Uh, for our board, we are not adjourning. We are continuing this meeting to what I suggested, uh, April fifth at three P M. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a question.
Tammy.
The board mentioned something about wanting to set a date for the CIP. Is that not-
We can, we can handle that ourselves internally. That's an interesting-
Just checking. I'm just doing it.
Yeah, we can. Right, yeah. Seager and I will get together on a date that works, and we'll reach out to you.
We have a motion. Skip, I need you to second it.
Second it.
Without objection. No objections. Meeting continued for the B O S.
Right, for the-
I'm gonna be during the meeting.
I do have a second.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Good job.
Shannon, can you send me this PowerPoint?
Good to see you. Thank you for everything. Jesse, do you want to just, thank you. Shannon, thank you. You are beyond, you're beyond amazing. I cannot thank you enough. So, appreciate everything that you do. So, appreciate it. Ernie, thank you for your words. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We're gonna get there. We're gonna get there.
I know, and one of these days, you and I-
We're gonna get together.
We're gonna sit down.
We're gonna get together.
We're gonna, we're gonna give ourselves a long time.